Okay, so we are on and it has been approved and we did change the date. Number three is Declaration of Pecuniary Interest either now or at time. And at this point, I will turn things over to Chair Counselor Vatabonkor as it's all financing Corporate Services for now. Moving forward, Counselor Vatabonkor.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So we're now at the Finance and Corporate Services section of this special committee, the whole as Budget Committee. And it's budget night. We're receiving the third draft of the budget. It reflects the third draft that staff have prepared. In fact, it's the first draft that we're seeing. We have a number of matters to deal with before we get to the budget per se. In conversation with staff earlier, this purpose of tonight is basically a working meeting. They're really interested in our input with respect to various items through the budget discussion this evening. So please feel free to import where you feel appropriate and I'll try to keep track of who wants to speak as we go through. So without further ado, then the first item on the agenda is 2021 community grants. And we have a number of grants that are being considered this evening. They were all, the applications and whatnot were included in your agenda package. I'm not sure if there's any questions on any of them. I'll just go through them so that everybody has a sense of what we're talking about. So the Georgian Bay General Hospital is asking for $15,000. And the recommendation is that that be approved and funded through their Community Capital Grant Program. The Southern Georgian Bay Physician Recruitment Group is asking for 8,500. And the recommendation is that be approved and funded from the Community Development Fund Reserve. The next grant request is a grant for $1,000 from the Sistema Heronia Music Academy. And it's recommended that it be approved and funded from the 2021 Council Contingency quote unquote Good Idea Fund. And the last, or sorry, the second last request is a request from the Cultural Alliance for $10,000. And the recommendation is that that grant request be deferred until December 9th where they will be making a deputation. And the last grant request is $2,000 from the Midland Penetang District CERT. And it's recommended that it be approved and funded from the 2021 Council Contingency, again, the Good Idea Fund. So that's a summary of the grant request. I'll go through, did anybody want to speak to the first one, which is the 15,000 from the Georgia Bay General Hospital? And I see Counselor Cummings. Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is nothing new. I'm just concerned again, and I will say it for at least twice on these grants, that we are double dipping. We are charging the taxpayer twice for these particular funds. And I don't believe it's right to be doing it. Our own policy states that if you are getting funding from the county or have even canvassed the county, you're not eligible for these capital grants. So I'm just going to voice my opinion now and then stop.
Thank you, Counselor Cummings. I will recognize that Mary LaRue, who has resolved this technical difficulty and has appeared on my screen. Welcome, Mary LaRue. We've started the meeting. We waited, but we understood you had technical difficulties. So welcome.
I tried and I indicated to Sarah to tell you to take over and move it along, George. I've been having difficulty with my computer all day long, but I'm back in. Hopefully, I'm going to be in for a while and I'm not going to disappear again, but just carry on.
Okay, well, Madam Deputy Mayor started the meeting, so I've just jumped in. So my only comment with respect to the request for the Georgian Bay General Hospital is that I thought we had talked about basically a dollar per resident as a capital contribution. The 15,000 is a little more than that. And I would, I would support a capital grant. I think it's worthwhile. I think it indicates the municipality's support, but not at 15,000. I would support basically whatever our number is per resident. And I see Mary LaRue put his card up, request to speak. Your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, this is an annual thing with the GBGH. We've been helping with their capital funds for quite a number of years. And I, I, I don't disagree wholeheartedly with Counselor Cummings in the sense, you know, that it kind of gets to you at times. But we do know that the Province and the Ministry of Health does not fund capital projects. And, and that's why they have a board that is constantly fundraising for capital projects. So I would be attuned to supporting this.
Thank you, worship. There's nothing further on this one. We'll head down to number two, which is the request from the Southern Georgian Bay Physician Recruitment for $8,500. This is one we have supported in the past. Any comments on this particular one? Counselor Cummings and then Mary LaRue.
Again, it's like an old hat here. This is not our bailiwick. We do not, we are not supposed to be doing these types of things as a municipality. It does not fall within our purview and I really would not support this.
Thank you, Counselor. And Mary LaRue?
Well, you know, Mr. Chair, I, I, I already knew that Counselor Cummings was going to be opposed, that he's brought it up before. And again, I don't disagree again with Counselor Cummings to the fact that, you know, it should be a health issue, a Ministry of Health issue. But on the same token, we have to realize that we're going to wait a long time for the Ministry of Health to come forward and help with physician recruitment. And so I again feel that I think it's something that is needed. I have to say that I was in a meeting just last week in regards to physician recruitment. And, you know, there's been some good vibes here that they've been doing excellent work for the municipality. I don't know if all members of council are aware as of yet, but the three doctors have opened a clinic called Waves Family Medicine at the Georgian Bay Village. So these are three new doctors that are going to be taking patients onboard. And, and so we know that they're working for us and then it's a need in the community. We have to make sure that we look after our residents. So I, for one, will be supporting it.
Thank you, worship. Counselor Rose?
Thank you. Again, I'm, I'm in the same vein as Counselor Cummings. Every year, I've always voted no on this one just for the fact that I don't think that it's fair that we're going to outbid a different community. We're going to take somebody's doctors from an underserviced area and bring them to us. Just as we would be upset if a city the size of Mississauga comes and steals our doctors and takes them away. It's a bad practice all the way around, but, you know, they do do good work, but that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, we'll move along then to the Sistema Heronia Music Academy. This is a grant request for $1,000. This is a new grant request. Any comments on this particular one? Counselor Rose?
Who are they? What do they do? Does it involve a lot of people in our municipality, that type of stuff?
Good, good questions. There is some information in their grant application. I'd have to pull it up unless staff can speak to it. I'm not, I know, Madam Deputy Mayor, do you have some information?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a lot of information, but I thought earlier you said that they would be coming to make a deputation to council. Did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, that's the next group. That's the Cultural Alliance.
Oh, Cultural Alliance, okay. The Sistema Heronia, they're a group that help children with music. They supply instruments and teach children probably that would not have an opportunity to get involved in learning or be able to afford an instrument. They've been going, I guess, for, I'd say, at least five years now. So that's about all I know about them. Maybe Carrie can shed some light.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just to add on to Deputy Mayor Duvo's comments. What I do know is that the $1,000 request is to assist with the sponsorship of a child. They're implementing, I guess, remote type of Zoom music lessons. So they're reaching out, I would imagine, to various groups for sponsorship. And our, this particular request is to sponsor one child.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Is this not something that we could sponsor through our fund at the Heronia Community Foundation? This is something that could go in that direction?
Madam Treasurer?
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this time, typically the $1,000 request is outside of our typical annual contribution available through our Heronia Community Foundation Youth Fund. And I believe through the last report that was preservation and our meeting, myself and the CAO met with Heronia Community Foundations. They suggested that this year is not a good year to be dispersing any funds, probably related to the negative growth, let's say, of the, of the fund and to leave it in there until next year per se. But again, $1,000 out of that fund probably would delete all of our, our grant monies available in that fund.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Counselor Sanama?
I just, I just wanted to add a little bit of information. What I know of Sistema is they, they do, as the Deputy Mayor attested to, is that they are supporting children that could not afford to have music lessons. They do provide an after, it has been an after-school program, but because of COVID now, they are doing it remotely. And they do, historically, they'll have a couple of fundraisers throughout the year. But again, because of COVID, they haven't been able to have the fundraisers to be able to raise the funds to, to be able to support, to support the group. And I have, I have seen them perform. And from what I know, the, you know, the benefits and there are children from Penetanggishing that are supported as well. It's not like it is, it's for the, it is for the whole area. So I believe it's a, it's a worthwhile, it is a worthwhile cause. And if we have the, if the funds are available in our Good Idea Fund, I would be in support of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rose?
I just wanted to clarify, did I hear Carrie correct to say that this $1,000 was for one single person?
That's correct. That's what she said.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions on this particular request? Okay, seeing none. Then the next one is from the Cultural Alliance. And that one's recommended to be deferred until their deputation on December 9th. So if anybody has any questions or comments, I suggest we hold them until then. And then the last request is $2,000 from the Midland Penetanggishing District Community Emergency Response Team. And the recommendation is it be approved and funded from the Good Idea Fund. Any questions or comments on this particular request, Madam Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we, we do support them by giving them space to hold their meetings. Is that correct? So there is a cost to that. And I thought at one time we gave them space to store their vehicles. Do we still do that as well? Just for clarification. I guess Sheri?
The Recreation Directors popped up. So Sheri, do you have an answer for those two questions?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Deputy Mayor Duvo. CERT hasn't actually stored their vehicle in the Town Hall Garage for quite a few years, a few years now. And we do waive, council waives the room rental fees to have their meetings at the arena. However, it's kind of a trade because they provide support at all of our special events and we don't pay for that, that service.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that one? Okay, so we have several items covered in this one particular motion. We could vote on the motion altogether or we could split the motion. What is the, what is the will of the, of the group? Okay, well, may I have a mover then to move the motion? Counselor Levy, a seconder, Deputy Mayor Duvo. So I'll read the motion then, that the capital funding request of $15,000 from Georgian Bay General Hospital be approved and funded through the Community Capital Grant Program. And that the 2021 funding request, $8,500 from Southern Georgian Bay Physician Recruitment be approved and funded from the Community Development Fund Reserve. And further, that the 2021 funding request of 1,000 from the Sistema Heronia Music Academy be approved and funded from the 2021 Council Contingency Good Idea Fund. And further, that the 2021 funding request, $10,000 from the Cultural Alliance be deferred until after their scheduled deputation on December 9th, 2020. And finally, that the 2021 funding request of $2,000 for the Midland Penetanggishing CERT be approved and funded from the Council Contingency Good Idea Fund. Any further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? Reopposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the next section in the agenda, and we have three staffing requests to consider. And in your agenda package, there are reports dealing with the background for each request. My understanding is that the department heads that are responsible for each of these staffing requests are going to provide a brief summary of their reports and then I'm going to open it up for discussion. So the first request is Planning and Development. And it's for a junior planner contract extension. And the recommendation is that the 2021 budget include an increased operating expense of $25,085 to expand the contract for the junior planner position to a one-year contract term. And I see our planning director has popped up on my screen. So Andrea, if you want to give a quick synopsis of your report, please?
Thank you very much, Counselor Vatabonkor. And I do apologize, I may have to turn off my camera. I'm getting error messages that my connection is a little unstable. So if that happens, I will just turn off my camera in hopes that I don't get booted out of this meeting. So you do have your, the staff report on the junior planner position that we put forward. You'll see there's some data in there. We've tried to provide some context as what's happening, what's changed in municipality over the course of a couple of years. I think largely what that report shows is the amount of work and the volume of work has substantially increased since I first started in the town in 2015. The volume of applications, the complexity of applications has definitely increased. So, so there is some real need and that's a primary function of planning is, is to process those applications and get development moving through whatever type of approval process from the Planning Act. The second piece of the report talks about justification from, from the neighbors. And where are we sort of in Simcoe County or Simcoe? And if you'll take a look at that staff comparator sheet, we, Penetanggishing is the lowest staff planning department out of the seven or eight that we did poll. I do know it's the lowest staff that if you were to compare it of all municipalities, I think maybe Rama might, might be the only one that's equal to us. But I think there's another note in that staffing that you should, should see is that the full-time position is only one person in that role, where there's not a second full-time position dedicated to planning work. So that's really a big gap in our ability to provide customer service when there's only one time, one full-time person in that role. So I, the contract we have currently is a part-time contract. And it is a flexible contract where we usually have the person start sometime in April or May and gradually increase their hours as the season and complexity of building and planning stuff, usually in the summer months, happens and to help us cover off vacations during summer months and so forth. And then it'll typically tail off in about October. So it's about an April till October contract with majority of hours happening in July and August. What we're asking for is an increase so that for a full year, we can have a full-time junior planner, not only in that summer months. I, I think probably what's not clear is that those planning applications come in all year long, not only in the summer months. And so it's, it's those off-seasons that also are very difficult for a single individual to manage the volume of just planning applications. I think that's as brief as I could be on the, the planning report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andrea. Any questions of Andrea on the, the planning contract extension? Seeing none. Pardon me. Just as I was moving on to the bylaw officer. So I believe that Counselor Sanama and then, oh, Counselor Sanama popped right up. Oh, there's, oh, there she is. Counselor Sanama and then Deputy Mayor Duvo.
Thank you very much, Counselor Vatabonkor. Through you to, to our department head, Andrea Betty. Quick question. I, the, the report was great, very extensive and certainly indications that we do need, you know, that we need another, a more, more coverage. I know that you, you touched base with the other municipalities. Did, have, did you look into any options about sharing services at all? Is that, was that a possibility for, for either the planning or the bylaw position?
Through you, Counselor Vatabonkor, to Counselor Sanama. We have had those discussions mostly with the four North Simcoe municipalities as for a position, that's what seems to make the most amount of sense. If you'll note, both or all three other municipalities are pretty lean in, in their planning staff complement too. So my response from them has been that they don't have the ability to share their current resources, help out in planning. And similar in the bylaw position, the most municipalities, tiny being the significant one, they have a large staff complement in the summer months only. And so they sort of go back, but there's, there's limited ability for us to share resources there. We did investigate it, but there was very limited availability.
Thank you. Madam Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to speak to support the request. As Andrea pointed out, the department over these last couple of years is very busy. And we're asking one individual to oversee three departments, her own department, bylaw and building. And I think that's a lot if, I understand that bylaw has gotten very busy as well. So it takes her away from doing what she should be doing. So I just speak in favor of the $25,000 to have a full-time junior planner for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So any further comments on this particular request? Okay, seeing none. Look for a mover to Madam, your worship moves and Madam Deputy Mayor seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. So we'll move on to the next one, which is again from the Planning and Development Department. And this is a contract extension request for the bylaw enforcement officer. And the recommendation is that the 2021 budget include an increased operating expense of $31,981 to expand the contract for the bylaw enforcement position to a one-year contract term. So once again, you have your reported the agenda and our department head will provide a quick synopsis. Andrea?
Yes, thank you very much, Counselor Vatabonkor. So this is another position in the town that we've seen increased demands on the department. And largely this year has been a result of COVID. I think everyone can appreciate the more people staying at home, the more time people have on their hands to do things and, and look around in the community and spot things. And this isn't expected to go away next year. So what we've been able to do fortunately is expand the contract times or the times that we have bylaw staff working. So for most of the summer, they will be seven-day scheduled shift or seven days a week by law enforcement services. So I think that's an important thing to note is that the bylaw department has an increased volume of complaints and just activity levels. And then they will be available longer during the day and on weekends moving forward with the additional staff help.
Thank you, Madam Director. Any questions of the director on this particular one? Oh, Counselor Cummings?
Thank you. Just a clarification, the salary is actually $47,515 and not 31. If I'm reading this correctly, so it's a full-time salary. Is that correct, Andrea?
Thank you, Counselor Cummings. I will perhaps defer to Carrie because I know her and I worked on, on the salary piece. But a piece of this that I'm maybe impacting it is we do typically get grants for that position. So that may be why there's a difference in number, but perhaps I can defer to, to Carrie. She might have a better sense of the, the money.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Cummings. I believe the amount that was actually written into the motion is the, not the full salary amount, but rather the increased budget amount required to add to the current budget allotment that's already in our budget, which includes wages and benefits. So it's the difference between what we need and what we have.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Any other questions on this one? Okay, seeing none. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Levy and a seconder. Counselor Clu, that the 2021 budget include an increased operating expense of $31,981 to expand the contract for the bylaw enforcement position to a one-year contract term. So it's been duly moved and seconded. Any further comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next request is from the Recreation and Community Services Department. And the recommendation is that $12,270 be included in the 2021 arena operating budget for the allocation of 40 facility attendant hours weekly from September 1st to December 31st. And again, there's a brief report in your agenda package. And our department head, Sheri DeJarda, will provide a quick synopsis of her report. Sheri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this comes in follow-up to a previous report that was brought to council in September about the reopening of the facility under this current pandemic situation. We had requested that we hire additional facility attendants to assist with the contact tracing requirements, screening folks at the door, disinfecting all of those additional pieces that needed to be completed to be compliant with public health's expectations of us to safely operate the facility. to be compliant with public health's expectations of us to safely operate the facility. It's been going well. We don't know unfortunately where we will be later on in 2021. So councils directed us to open the facility for this ice season. We've included in the budget those hours that were previously brought to council. So what we're proposing for the fall, since we have these unknowns, is that we meet middle of the road and we budget for 40 additional facility attendant hours as opposed to the 80, and hopefully restrictions have been let off slightly at that time and that we require less help. If we need more help, then we will, if we haven't achieved enough savings or any savings in the in the operating budget by the latter half of the year, then we will, we will come back to council for their consideration. And if we have, if we don't require those hours, we won't have COVID-specific purposes, we won't utilize them. And then finance will follow up with council what to do with those funds at at the end of the year.
Thank you. Sherry, any comments or questions to our department head? I have one. Basically a comment and then I'm going to move an amendment. When we were requested our input on the 2021 budget through the council budget survey, one of the things that I responded to was I felt that there was a need within the Recreation and Community Services Department to add another full-time staff member. I was prepared to consider perhaps eight months to start and then moving to 12 months as as we move through over a two-year period. The rationale behind that was that twofold. First of all, with respect to the arena staffing, to provide additional full-time assistance at the arena for scheduling purposes and knowledge transfer as some of our senior employees are looking to retire. The second point was to provide an additional staff resource into our parks division, which our facility staff end up into our parks as the as the ice season winds down. And as we know, we've seen in in some of our parks, especially in our in our Rotary Wind at Waterfront Park, some maintenance issues at the park. And one of the, one of the responses that I've received is with respect to resource constraints to be able to apply sufficient resources to be able to address some of the maintenance issues. And it's particularly acute when we have parks going at the same time the arenas going. So our staff at the arena, you know, they're they're doing the maintenance and whatnot in in late August as things fire up and and whatnot, and they also have parks responsibilities. And then as the students go back to school. So that's one of, that was the two reasons why I proposed it initially as part of the survey. Now, I understand that 2020 and 2021 is a little bit convoluted with COVID, and we've had to increase hours because of increased sanitization requirements and and whatnot. But setting that aside for a moment, I still think that from where I sit, that I think additional resources should be provided to our facilities and parks division to to assist them. So to assist with the budget, and I know we'll get into that a little bit later, I thought that if we could add another four months to the period, in the motion, it says September to December 31st. And I thought that if we could, if we could go from May to December 31st, that that would provide for eight months. My only comment is I'm not familiar with the collective agreement with our outside workers, so I don't know if that is permitted permitted under the collective agreement or not. I don't want to do anything to contravene the collective agreement or put staff in a difficult spot. But I would, at the conclusion of the conversation or discussion, I'm going to propose an amendment to that to that motion. So I'll pause there and see if if Sherry has any comments, and then I'll see if there's any other questions from members of council.
Thank you, Councilor Vatibonkor. Some insightful comments there, and absolutely the the shoulder season is quite challenging for staff. I mean, we've had had incidents just this past past week, we have an unexpected leave from a staff member, and we just can't respond to things that are happening in the parks because we can't leave the leave the arena. We just don't have the staff to do it. So the the flexibility is is not always there for us, but we could certainly always use additional additional staffing. And of many things that we could put put that additional help to, both in the facility, in the parks, in in both indoor and outdoor projects that we often put on the back burner for a rainy day or whatnot, we could tackle those more in a in a timely, timely manner. There are some things in the parks now that we've, we are waiting until spring to rectify just because we've had to to convert to arena, arena season.
Thank you, Sherry. And I see Tammy has popped up and she has some comments. So welcome, Tammy.
Thank you. Through you, your chair, I just wanted to let you know that there is no nothing contradictory for that in the collective. We are okay to to do that. So I just wanted to provide some reassurance.
Thank you, Tammy. Any other comments or questions and your worship? Oh, you're on mute. Your worship?
Okay, here we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I am pleased to see that you are bringing this forward, Councilor Vatibonkor. I've been making for some time a need for another additional staff at Rec and Culture. We know besides the arena, we have not just Penetangusine Rotary Waterfront Park. We have many parks throughout the municipality, and I know in the summer months it becomes a real chore to keep them and maintain them. And and the other fact is that sometimes when we find that somebody falls ill or sick, there's no replacement and there's nobody to pick up the slack. So if you're going to propose a motion, Councilor Vatibonkor, that we extend this eight months or for whatever, to eight months and possibility of full-time in the future, I will gladly second your motion.
Thank you, your worship. That was my intent, was that it would be eight months in 2020, and then we'd add another four months in 2021. And so it would be another full-time position. I was just trying to ease the pressure on the on the budget. So thank you. Any other, any other comments or questions? Yes, Madam Department Head.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the challenges for, and I very much appreciate the help and, as I said, insight. Unfortunately, though, facility attendants are very limited in what they're able to do. They can't flood the ice. They can't operate tractors in the parks. What what if would be truly of value to the parks and facilities team would be a facility operator? But those obviously have greater financial impacts.
Okay, well, I, you know, and and certainly I appreciate your advice on that. You know your operation better than anyone. So from that standpoint, that's where I I wanted to go initially, and I I still think that is the route to go. I was just trying to soften it from a budget impact standpoint, but I think that given what we've heard in the interest, that perhaps I'll amend my motion. I haven't even put it on the floor yet, but I'll I'll amend it to to make it that, to to propose that it be a full-time facility operator position, and we can attract somebody with the skills that are required to meet the needs of the department. So thank you for that. And I see the treasurer's popped up. So Madam Treasurer, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
I do have a comment just related to budget and funding source for whatever motion is being brought forward. Certainly, my recommendation wouldn't change. It would still be recommended to be funded out of our Service Delivery Review Budget Line, which is a permanent budget line in our budget. The purpose of that Service Delivery Review was to obviously increase our service levels, improve our service levels. We have been transferring to a Service Delivery Review Reserve for the last couple of years. So timing-wise, the use of this budget line for a more permanent solution such as another full-time facility operator would be good timing and funding is available through that, through that budget Service Delivery Review Mechanism.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Madam Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through to Carrie. What kind of dollars are in the Service Delivery line item, Carrie?
Currently, we have $166,000 in the budget line. So that doesn't include monies that have already been transferred into our Service Delivery Review Reserve for addressing some of the Service Delivery Review Initiatives. But in 2021, there is $166,000. And tonight, within this report, these staffing requests are are being recommended to be funded out of there. So you know, assuming we could calculate what the impact of this amended motion would be, there would still be enough funds. And then some. I wouldn't use all those funds to to approve these requests and amend the the arena request.
Mr. Chair?
Madam Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I wonder if we could defer this item until we had more information in the actual dollar figures so we could make an informed decision.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I see the clerks popped up, so I'll ask the clerk.
Just just as a suggestion, just because this isn't the last time this will be discussed or approved, I was going to suggest just that the the funding, that the the motion be more vague and just say that funding for a full-time facility operator be included in the 2021 operating budget. That that calculation could be done for the next draft when the treasurer brings that second set forward, and then you'd actually see the the overall impact. It can be deferred as well, but just in case you wanted to kind of get the ball rolling on it, that would be an option as well.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Deputy Mayor, would would you be in agreement with that approach? Certainly, that would satisfy me, but would that satisfy you as well?
Yes, I do believe. I think it's a great idea. I do support the need. I'm in the park all the time, and certainly there are, as has been pointed out, there are things that are neglected because we just don't have the staff. And the same at the arena. Other years, certainly going to hockey games, I can see that additional staff would certainly be a big help. But I do think we need to understand the dollar figure and just what it entails. So I support moving forward, certainly.
Okay, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So perhaps, Madam Clerk, you could read your motion again. Because I understand that we haven't moved in second of the recommendations, so I think we could use what you've enunciated there as the recommendation, and I'll seek a mover and a seconder. I'm not sure if I can move it myself as the chair, but if you could repeat your proposed motion, and I'll call for a mover and a seconder.
Thank you. Yes, I will have that you, I mean, unless you Deputy Mayor wants to take this amendment, but we do need to have for the minutes that the motion was, amendment to the motion was made. So whether that be you, Councilor Vatibonkor, or Deputy Mayor DeWol, I can do that, no problem.
Yeah, I can second it.
So all I have is simply, and and the treasurer can interrupt if she needs more more than this to proceed. Just simply that funding for a full-time facility operator be included in the 2021 operating budget.
Thank you. So Madam Deputy Mayor has moved that. I second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you. So moving on to the the main item on our agenda tonight is the draft number three of the 2021 budget, and the treasurer has put together a report that outlines the budget. I want to congratulate the treasurer and staff for coming in slightly under the council-approved guideline. As you read in your report, what's being recommended to us is a budget with a 1.4% tax rate increase. The guideline that we provided to staff was 1.5%. So again, I want to commend staff. The capital budget allocation, tax levy contribution has increased. We've increased in a number of areas that council identified as priorities, which is really great to see. And earlier today or later this like this afternoon, we also received a copy of the fleet replacement schedule, and that was something that we'd asked for at our section meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to the treasurer now, and maybe she can go over the highlights of her report, and we'll open up for questions. Madam Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Mr. Chair just commented, staff have done a lot of work, obviously. Draft one and draft two, staff have worked on, which is why we're calling this draft three, bringing it to to committee of the whole, even though this is your first review of of our draft budget. But we just wanted to let you know how much work has gone into it prior to to bringing it forward. Just briefly, I'll I'll mention that departmentally, obviously, staff have worked on it. Our initial draft one budget came in at 2.9% tax impact. And our 2021 and and 2022 capital program was at 1.5 and 1 point, almost 1.7 million dollars. So we had some work to do on the on the first draft. And we did get together individually. We also got together in an all-management team meeting. And draft number two came in at 1.5% tax impact. Our capital programs, we fine-tuned them down to the taxation we that we closer to the taxation that we have available for the capital program at 1.4 and 1.5 million dollars. And then some fine-tuning before getting it ready to present to committee tonight. Draft three, we were able to get it down to 1.4% as well as 2021 capital program taxation of 1.335 million and recommended increase not only in 2021, but also in 2022 by another $100,000 to 1.435 million. So that's the draft that's being presented to you. Staff used a lot of the key corporate documents that we do pull our information from to ensure certainly as well as the budget summaries that were done and completed by the public, by council, as well as by management. Pulling that information to try to bring to you today, this evening, and throughout the budget process, a budget that that obviously is driven by what the public and the and and council members wish to see in in our annual budget. So for example, briefly, some of the key corporate documents that we pulled into our our draft budget is the community-based strategic plan, the official plan, our community improvement plan, our fire and recreation master plans, our Penetangusine cycling strategy, our development charges background study, climate change action plan, as well as our service excellence strategy, service delivery review, and our water and wastewater rate study. So again, those documents don't sit on the shelf and they don't stand alone. We do utilize them on an ongoing basis, and certainly for this budget process, pulling all pulling all that information together, it takes a team effort and a lot of work and it takes a team effort and a lot of work, and happy to be presenting the low council direction that was given to us back in September, when we calculated municipal price index at 1.5%. We did take into account conservative CVA current, sorry, current value assessment, new growth. Again, our conservative estimate in this budget draft is 1.2%. We've also included those budget surveys that I just mentioned. So again, that's just for background information. We also, as directed from committee at another meeting, we did include, and we included a link to the recent report related to the Great Lakes Membership Initiative, membership. So that's included, and that $2,200, as directed, has been included for discussion in the 2021 budget. Again, the 1.4%, I just wanted to mention, is broken down, and as Counselor Vatavankor mentioned, we did purposely recommend an increase to our capital program of about $109,000. So that pretty, that alone represents 1% of our 1.4% increase. And the balance of about $50,000 is the 0.4% that our budget is increasing. And if you dig a little deeper into that, $35,000 of that is to increase our operating budget for our preventative road maintenance program by $35,000. So in effect, staff have brought forth an operating budget pretty close to zero year-over-year, about $15,000 more than last year, as it pertains to annual operating. Again, as I mentioned, that that capital investment, we're recommending an increase. We do have, you know, every year, more capital projects, obviously, than we do have taxation to fund them. So when we look at all sources of funding for all of our capital program in terms of development charges, reserves, grants, subsidies, water and wastewater rates, and taxation, certainly focusing on increasing that taxation for capital purposes is key to growing that capital program on an annual basis. So currently, our capital program budget for 2020 is at $1.225 million and change. So as I mentioned, included in this 1.4% is about $109,000 increase to our 2021 capital program, and another $100,000 recommended increase for our 2022 capital program. In terms of the potential tax impact related to related to our 1.4% budget increase, which actually represents about $159,000. So going through our 2021 draft budget, there's a number of drivers, obviously, that are, that are up, that are down, and then overall, we were able to come to, come to a net, a net impact of the 1.4%. But again, the majority of that is related to capital. So some of those major budget changes in terms of drivers are related to reduced revenues due to COVID. The impact in our 2021 draft budget, obviously, we anticipate that the impact on our revenues will continue through 2021. So we're estimating an impact on our revenues of about $216,000. We're also based on collective bargaining agreements, salaries, wages, remuneration, and benefits. We are anticipating an impact of $140,000. Our insurance is typically, on an annual basis, one of the, one of the major budget change drivers. So again, based on our increased investment into our infrastructure, our tangible capital assets, our insurance does go up on an annual basis, not only for the, you know, liability side of things, that typically does go up, but certainly also based on the cost replacement value of our assets and our continued investment in our infrastructure causes our insurance to go up as well. We have purposely increased our investment in our IT infrastructure, our applications, the security applications that we implement through our managed service provider, as well as, as a result of some of the from council-approved municipal modernization projects. And with the implementation of those municipal modernization projects, such as online online transactions available, improving our website, additional software to operate in a more efficient manner. Some of those projects are in process, but they will require software support agreements in the future, ongoing to maintain them. So we've increased our investment related to that, to for the costs related to some of those upgrades, online upgrades, and municipal modernization projects that are in, that are in progress. As I mentioned, the other major driver is the 2021 preventative maintenance program. There's an increase recommended in this, in this budget draft of $35,000 over, over last year. And the new assessment growth that, that we, that we encountered in 2020, and council did approve that that new assessment growth, if you remember last year during 2020 budget approval, our growth was higher than anticipated. And last, I believe it was in April, council approved that half of that growth, we would give back to our residents, and the other half, we would put into a tax stabilization reserve for future use to stabilize our tax rate increases year-over-year. So because of that new growth, that is certainly now in our levy and our assessment, and it basically offsets the majority of those major budget drivers that we, that we are outlining this evening in our 2021 budget impact, as well as our 2021 estimated new assessment growth that we are estimating, like, as I mentioned, 1.2%. So overall, those are the major budget drivers that, other than some reallocation of budget lines and GL accounts that we've reallocated from one department to another, some a grant that we didn't get last year, so it increased a net, a net increase to our planning and developing, planning and development department, for example. But it all, it all netted out to these major changer, changes, and again, 159,000 or 1.4% increase over last year. In my report, there is a summary of the 2020 compared to the 2021 budget by division, department, and then summarized by section in terms of finance and corporate services, which is sitting at year-over-year in a negative 10% position, which basically the majority of that impact is, is from that new assessment growth as well as as well as the assessment growth from 2020, and again, the 2021 estimated assessment growth. So this is where, the section where most of the corporate revenue runs through, so we are anticipating a net, a net reduction to the requirements in the FCS budget. The planning and development budget, year-over-year, is sitting at a $50,000 increase, or 15%. And as I mentioned, last year, there was a grant that was budgeted to be received, which it wasn't. So once we take that out of the budget for this year, because it, we didn't receive it, that's the reason for that, that larger impact year-over-year to the planning and development budget. Transportation and environmental services, which includes Public Works Administration and the Roads Department. The year-over-year increase is $193,000, or 6.6%. This would be where the increase in the preventative road maintenance program is, as well. Council had previously approved, and it's included in the 2021 budget, an additional roads equipment operator for the Roads Department. So that would be two, two key budget changes in transportation and environmental. In terms of recreation and corporate services, year-over-year, there's an increase of $123,000, or nine, 9% year-over-year. The majority of this increase would be the reallocation of lottery licensing revenue of about the same amount, so about $120,000 or so that has been removed in the Recreation and Community Services budget and put into, and reallocated to the corporate services budget. So that's why there's a there's a big increase over there, because we've removed that lottery license revenue. In terms of the library, the library has, as well as all the other sections, provided budget documents, and their year-over-year increase is just over $9,000, or 2%. And again, I mentioned capital at $109,000, or almost a 9% increase. And I have not mentioned policing yet. So in terms of policing, we have received the 2021 estimated billing from the OPP. We also did receive notification of a 2019 year-end credit that we could apply to our 2021 estimated contract billing. So the net effect of that was to the good, and there's actually a transfer to reserve within the policing budget, and a net impact to our residents of 0%. Typically, when we don't have a large year-end credit, like we did get this year, typically, there's a small transfer from reserve to stabilize the tax impact of OPP. This year, it's the other way around. We did get a year-end credit, so we will be transferring those funds to our reserve to, again, stabilize any tax impacts in future years. Other budget documents that I've included for information would be related to the Severn Sound Environmental Association, related to their 2021 financial request. That would be attachment number four. And they are asking for overall a 5.9% increase for SSEA, a reduction to risk management services of negative 9% and a reduction to Severn Sound Sustainability of negative 19%. So overall, their request is coming in at 1.6% higher than 2020. Huronia Airport Commission, I've attached their 2021 financial request and budget information that they've provided as attachment number five. The Airport Commission has asked for a 0% increase over 2020, as well as stable runway loan support payment, same as last year, and a reduction from last year's capital request that was 19,600. They have reduced their request for a specific piece of equipment related to snow removal, I believe, and it's a $10,000 request. So overall, they're asking for about $9,500 less, or negative 16% over last year. And the third organization, Economic Development Corporation of North Simcoe, that is based on our calculation of 0.75% of our tax levy. So our tax levy is not finalized until we adopt the budget and approve the tax rates in early April. But the estimate of their contribution for 2021 is about $84,500, which is an increase over the previous year of about 3.5% or $2,800. I think that's it in terms of a summary. My report also does just touch on the staffing requests that we've previously just heard from other, other managers related to that, and how do we go about funding it, which we've talked about, as well as the community capital grants, and how we go about funding those in our 2021 budget process. So at this point, I think I've covered everything that I wanted to cover, and certainly, open it up to all of you to ask any questions of any of the senior managers here, or certainly discuss any of the 2021 and 2022 capital program. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. So before I go to questions, I'll just ask Deputy Mayor Dubo, or then Counselor Rose, and then Counselor Levy, if you had anything to add with respect to the budgets that you are involved with, the organizations that you sit on. So Madam Deputy Mayor, the Severn Sound Environmental Association, did you have anything to add to what the treasurer said with respect to the budget request? You're on mute, Madam Deputy Mayor.
No, I don't have anything to add. I think the request of 1.6 is extremely reasonable. As you know, the sustainability, they combined those two things this year, and I think it did demonstrate a reduction in costs overall. So no, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Counselor Rose, anything to add about the Airport Commission? No, you don't. Okay, thank you. And Counselor Levy, with respect to the North Simcoe Economic Development Corporation, anything to add with respect to that budget request?
I do not. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so any questions of members of council with respect to the treasurer's overview on the, on the budget? Counselor Rose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was just one question that had come up a few weeks ago by Counselor Cummings about the Great Lakes, joining the Great Lakes watershed system again. It was in the budget at approximately $2,200, and it was indicated at that time that that was something that, as a county, we had already participating in. And staff was going to check to see whether this would be a duplication. And staff was going to check to see whether this would be a duplication or not.
Thank you, Counselor. So I know that came up at section meeting earlier. Counselor Cummings did ask that question, and I was wondering if staff have had an opportunity to to find the answer to that question. CAO.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair. I believe Deputy Mayor Dubois was going to have some conversations at the county level, so if I don't mean to put her on the spot, but we certainly did reach out to her today with the intent that hopefully she may have some information to shed for council.
My apologies, Mr. CAO. I almost didn't recognize you there with the glasses on. So I was just like, who is this new guy that popped up there? So anyway, sorry about that. Madam Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I must apologize. I forgot about that. I've been busy and I did not make the inquiries I should have. So I would ask forgiveness for members of council and to table this to our next draft. Where I will certainly have the information necessary to may or to make the decision positively or negatively.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So I see Counselor Rose is satisfied with that approach. Madam Treasurer, you had something to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I forgot the best part. And that was to and that was to let everybody know that even though we are coming in at one point four percent currently in this budget draft. As always, in terms of the growth that we have been seeing, as well as in terms of the extraordinary growth that the southern part of the county does see, that we even even though that ours is currently at one point four percent, overall, we are anticipating, we won't know until the end of March or so, but we are anticipating an overall net impact of zero percent or below in terms of the year over year taxable for residents. So again, we may be in the same position that we were in last year, which is to you know, give money back to all the taxpayers and and maybe even at this point, I know last year we came in at a net zero. This year, we may be even able to go to a reduction. But again, we won't know that until the end of March. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Counselor Cummings, you had a question or comment?
I did. Counselor Rose stole stole my thunder because I was again going to reiterate that this is a county thing and not us. And I was hoping that the deputy mayor would have done her homework and got the answers that I requested. However, I guess we'll have to deal with this then in the next draft.
Thank you very much for that consideration to both Counselor LaRose and Counselor Cummings.
Thank you. Any other any other questions? I had one just with respect to the fleet replacement schedule. So I appreciate the the fleet replacement schedule being provided as part of our council package. I was just wondering for our next draft of the review, whether we could have that updated to two thousand and twenty, just with respect to the vehicles and what's proposed to be replaced, et cetera, et cetera. So just make that request for the next time around. And I see Counselor Rose and Counselor Cummings and Mr. CAO popped up. Now that I recognize them, did you have something to add there, Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to comment that we will we will bring back a revised fleet fleet replacement schedule for the December eighth special budget COW meeting. Staff are are working on that update, and we apologize that it's not at this meeting, but we will certainly have it committee for December the eighth.
Thank you. Counselor Rose, then Counselor Cummings, and then Counselor Myatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, especially in a year where it doesn't look like we're going to have a big increase or an increase at all possibly. Did I miss in the budget where it showed what we were applying to our debt reduction? Or is this a year where we could add to that amount of money to do that? Now, I don't know if Carrie knows that off the top of her head, or I don't know if section has looked at a report that gives a status of all the monies owing and which ones could be taken off or added to.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's through through to Counselor LaRose. I don't know that number off the top of my head, but that's certainly something that I include in the December eighth PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to be doing for our budget public consultation. It gets into more of the the debt reduction. What I can touch on this evening is to let you know that the fire department debenture, which is a was a a high annual payment is only a partial payment this year and it's finished. So our plan was that in the interim, if council remembers, we also had a new debenture for our main street to be paid out of taxation. So we were supporting it over the last two years through our asset management reserve until such time as that fire debenture is paid in full. And then we're going to reallocate some of those debenture debt reduction funds from fire to public works, but we were also going to keep some in the fire budget in terms of transferring it to a fire reserve for them to fund future large, obviously, equipment replacements, another aerial in the future, so on and so forth. So there has been some work done on the debt reduction schedule. But you'll see more information in terms of year over year changes at the in the next draft and and at the public consultation in the PowerPoint. Okay?
Thank you. Look forward to seeing that on the eighth.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Counselor Cummings, and then Counselor Myatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps we can wake the fire chief up for this one. I noticed that there is a request, or pardon me, there is a line item that is for replacement of a tanker for three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. And I'm not, I can't see anywhere in this package where there's a justification sheet been filled out. I would really like to know what the kilometerage is and what the shape of this vehicle is. And I'm not sure which one it is on our vehicle replacement schedule either. So perhaps the fire chief can let us know on the next draft what that's all about.
Thank you, Counselor Cummings. Our fire chiefs. Mike is on. I don't know if sure if he wants to comment now or wait till the next draft. Chief?
I I can wait. I only caught half of Counselor Cummings' question. So the tanker replacement that's there now is to was approved to be replaced this year. The RFP is out. That's for a bigger tanker to supply more water for the non hydrant protected areas. So the object of having the new tanker, bigger tankers brings more water, which will enable us hopefully to reach fire survey underwriters requirement for water supply. So those people in the non hydrant protected area would receive hydrant protected ratings for their homes.
Thank you, Chief. So that was a two thousand and twenty project, I gather. So
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor let approved that one, yes.
Okay, it's just that I saw it on the two thousand and twenty one schedule. I think the treasurer has something to say.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, I should clarify. In terms of the two thousand and twenty one capital program before you. We did do some estimates of year and carry forwards in terms of multi-year projects as well as projects that the funds may not fully be spent or dispersed in two thousand and twenty. So just to clarify again, just related to your comment, Counselor Cummings, any of those projects, I apologize, I didn't clarify, but any of those projects that you see with a capital C before it. You won't see a capital justification sheet for them because they're they're two thousand and twenty projects that we're anticipating. At this point, it's an estimate of some of the carry forwards that we're anticipating. We don't typically formalize the carry forwards until further on in the budget process, as well as finalize them until February or March.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I apologize, I didn't hear the whole question, but the treasurer had the answer.
I did tell you he was asleep, didn't I?
I was gonna say that, but you already knew it.
Counselor Myatt, you had a comment or a question?
No, I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I had a question maybe to our Director of Public Works, and that has to do with the surface treatment of MacArthur MacArthur Road and and some of the streets in the Polish subdivision. I was just trying to find it here in terms of the timing. I think it's two hundred thousand dollars if I recall correctly the cost of it, and I think it's in scheduled for two thousand and twenty four, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm having a hard time finding it. Oh, there it is. Yeah, surface two thousand and twenty four, surface treatment of MacArthur, Wasniak, Polish, and Cahy, two hundred thousand. And that's taxation. So having having driven down MacArthur a few times, I know the challenges in terms of trying to keep potholes out of that out of that road, especially where the asphalt ends and the gravel surface starts. And then as you do the little S turn through there. It it's a difficult road to maintain. I was just wondering if you had any comments with respect to the timing of that and and whether you feel that it's still, it can last till two thousand and twenty four until the surface treatment is is applied on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We put that in the the capital plan because, as you know, and as and most of council knows, that we've been maintaining that what's commonly referred to as the the Polish subdivision for, well, since its construction as a gravel road network since it was constructed. We put it in as two thousand and twenty four for surface treatment, which is a double surface treatment similar to what was done on Brunel Side Road approximately five, six years ago, where there would be a surface treatment coupled by a slurry seal on top of it. It looks similar to an asphalt surface, but it is a surface treatment. We do get a little bit of extra life out of those treatments as opposed to to simply surface treating it. And yes, we can, we can maintain it. We have been maintaining it for the last several decades in its current form, but it does require an increase or an improved surface course on top so that we can reduce our our maintenance that we're seeing in terms of grading it twice a year.
So just so I understand, then, are we putting some gravel down? Is that the plan? And just so that we have a little bit better surface to work with? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, we we do. We do grade the roads on an annual basis, and we do complete repairs throughout the season as in response to to rainfall events and potholes as they come up. This surface treatment is a is a chip seal similar to what you would find on on Gordon Drive or Brunel Side Road, which has been done in the past. In order to improve the surface and eliminate a lot of this ongoing maintenance, we're proposing to improve the surface to a surface treated surface. And will resist washouts and pothole and give it a longer service life.
I know, and I appreciate that, Brian, in terms of what the intent of of just between, it's gonna last three more years and I know we've we've maintained it over all these years. It's just a question whether it will last that long, or maybe that's something we should be considering moving up in our in our program. I'll leave that with you. Perhaps as we go through the year, you can report on that, just as we may want to consider it for for two thousand and twenty two. But that was my only question with respect to the the capital detail. I did have one question for the treasurer, and that had to do with the in the in the budget sheets in the capital program, there are a number of yellow highlights. And I was just curious in terms of what the yellow highlights are in the in the program, and if it was explained, I apologize, I missed it.
I apologize, I didn't explain it, so I missed it. The the yellow highlighting in terms of the two thousand and twenty one capital program was an exercise basically that we did internally with staff because if if you recall, two thousand and twenty one was preapproved last year through the budget process, the two year capital budget that capital program that was already preapproved, obviously, we still bring it forward this year for approval again, when staff have the opportunity to bring forward new or updated information related to that two thousand and twenty one budget. But also new projects that were highlighted in yellow to let me know that it's new, but also to let you know that it's new. So it wasn't there last year in terms of the preapproved two thousand and twenty one capital program. So on a staff level, we discussed that, you know, if if you're bringing in new projects. They they should probably be high priority, and we're gonna have to do some, you know, reallocating and and balancing of capital projects to be able to fit them in, which we have been able to do. I'll albeit with a with a recommended increase to the capital taxation program to afford all of these projects.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I see Counselor Cummings requested. Counselor Cummings, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I just need clarification from the treasurer. When does maintenance become capital? Because I know there's a lot on our capital budget that are actually maintenance items like brick repair and things like that. So when does it become capital from a maintenance item?
So just through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Cummings, to answer your question. We call this our capital program. Obviously, not every project within our capital program is a, you know, a capital tangible capital asset or an improvement to a tangible capital asset from the perspective of accounting and the accounting treatment and and cycle of that. It's really for larger ticket items, one-time items, as well as true capital investment into a tangible capital asset, whether it be equipment, machinery, vehicle, facilities, roads, so on and so forth. So we do not have a distinction in our capital program. Ideally, if it's if it's a higher ticket item or a one-time item, we don't want it in our operating budget because we don't want that fluctuation in terms of the tax impact to our to our residents and through our budget process. So they are in this capital program, but at year end, when I sit down and do our final year end accounting and prepare for a year end audit. We do not capitalize all of these projects under the accounting standards. We only capitalize what is truly a tangible capital asset. So I'm not sure if that is what you were looking for in terms of information. But really, it's it's so that our operating budget doesn't have those one-time or large fluctuations related to higher ticket maintenance items. So we turn it into a capital project.
Okay, yeah, that sort of answers my question. It just, I noticed there's several hundred thousand dollars in these projects that could go to a real good capital asset. in these projects that could go to a real good capital asset that we're not using, and I was just wondering why. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of council with respect to the proposed budget, the 10-year forecast, the other budgets that are being proposed as part of the third draft this evening? Counselor Sanamal?
Thank you. Just a quick question, so it's square in my mind. I know that we, like right now, we're doing this study about possibly a new recreational facility, and yet I don't see anything long-term in our budget to be able to facilitate that at any point. Is that something that we look at when the decisions are made, or how do we tackle that?
Very good question, Counselor. CAO has popped up, and perhaps he's gonna answer the treasurer. Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I know where Counselor Sanamal's question was going to, and I think it's really with respect to, you know, looking at some of the options that the consultant study may come back with vis-à-vis putting money into the existing facility or maybe looking at a new facility. And so I think from our perspective, and I'll let Carrie speak to the financial piece and, you know, how we might fund any sort of option that council looks at. But I think, you know, from our perspective, we've kind of didn't want to speculate too much in terms of how the report may come out in terms of options and recommendation, and particularly didn't want to speculate how we think council may end up going in the end. But I think financially, Carrie certainly can speak to how, you know, how we would lean on funding for whatever route it is that council chooses. Inevitably, you know, there's a number of considerations that council would have to consider. So debt, reserve, internal debt financing, maybe looking at grants, obviously. So that doesn't answer your question, but certainly Carrie can speak to some of the financial, you know, opportunities that we could lean on with respect to a decision that council might make.
Counselor, do you have anything to add to the CAO's response?
Sure, I can add to that through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Sanamal. So in relation to, I guess, the feasibility study that's going on and the potential results of future council decisions related to that, we certainly don't have any specific funding mechanisms put in place to finance any future decisions long-term. I think that's gonna be a huge discussion to be had when, you know, council is pondering those decisions. So until such time as, you know, as the CAO mentioned, if it's going to be a large investment, we're gonna have to look at long-term financing implications, whether it be debt, debentures, grants. In the interim, though, I guess what I can speak to is we are transferring to our asset management reserve, which is for the replacement of our aging infrastructure, not certainly that it's at any level that we could, you know, if it's a $26 million sewage treatment plant expansion, it's not certainly at that level yet. But on an annual basis and included in our 2021 draft budget, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but it's in the area of close to half a million dollars that we're transferring in there, maybe $450,000. So we are tucking some money away on an annual basis for some of those big asset management decisions to be made. But thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and the CAO put his hand up. Mr. CAO?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add just for, and I think council knows this, but certainly for the public's sake, you know, the feasibility study that we're going through is a long-term, you know, plan. And so just for the public's sake, certainly, you know, I think from our perspective, we don't anticipate that we're gonna, you know, that there's gonna be much impact in 2021. Certainly, and I know that Counselor Sanamal and council knows that, but certainly I think Counselor Sanamal's question's a good one in that we need to start planning for the future, and certainly that would be our intent as we know a little more information from council in terms of what path we're gonna go down. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Counselor Cummings?
Thank you. Carrie, there used to be, now I'm not sure, back in the day, you know, the old days, development charges used to have arenas as part of their reserve fund that had to be kept for new purchases or capital expenditures. Do we still have that in place?
Madam Treasurer?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Cummings. So do you mean development charges allocated for recreational facilities?
Yes.
Like in general, when we collect development charges? So if council recalls, there was a timeframe, a time period when recreational facilities kind of fell off of our development charges background study because they had too many development charges to be able to continue to collect development charges for that purpose. So that was several years ago. Since then, those development charges have reduced and been spent on some recreational items. So if I recall correctly, our last development charges background study was in 2019, and recreational facilities are now back into our development charges background study. Having said that, again, future large decisions related to the arena or the future of a new arena or renovating our current, retrofitting and renovating our current arena, specifically, that would not be in our development charges background study. So that level of a project would not be currently being collected development charges on. So again, that's something that we probably want to think about when we start to make decisions and think longer term is, do we wait till our next development charge study, or do we update it, you know, in the interim, maybe at the five-year mark or sooner? That's again another question that we need to decide upon.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? And we'll wrap up this general overview, and then we'll get to the various sections as we go through, and people might have an opportunity to ask questions at that point as well. So any other general questions about the budget summary? Counselor Clu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just something I wanted to mention was, I think it's a great budget. I think in accordance with our strategic plan, we're missing the piece about the affordable housing. And so I was hoping to propose that we develop possibly a reserve where we start to allocate some money each year to build up our coffers for future affordable housing project, whether that be a partnership, whether that be some sort of... Well, there could be all sorts of things. There's a number of municipalities that have affordable housing funds, and they have policies that go with it, and I think there's a lot of research we need to do to figure out what that's going to be used for. But I would really like to see this council start putting some money aside to say, we believe in affordable housing. It's in our strategic plan, and we're putting money towards the future of housing in our town.
Thank you, Counselor. Excellent idea. Any other thoughts on the general summary? Okay, I'm gonna read the motion then, and then we'll move on to the various sections. The motion is that the draft number three, 2021 budget report and related budget documents be received for information and discussion, and that staff amend the budget as directed. So we've had good conversation, good discussion this evening, some good ideas brought forward. I trust staff have captured all the ideas. So is there any further, anything further on this before I call for mover and seconder? Seeing none, may I have a mover then for the motion? Counselor Rose, a seconder, Counselor Sanamal, anything further? All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you. So we'll move on to Transportation and Environment 2021 budget documents. And the motion is that the Transportation Environmental Services Section 2021 budget documents be received for information. Any further questions on the Transportation Environment Section of the budget? Either goals and objectives, operating budget or capital? Anything on the draft three? Seeing none, may I have a mover then for the draft three? Counselor Levy, a seconder, Counselor Mott? Any further comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Moving on then to the Planning and Development 2021 budget documents. And the recommendation is that the Planning and Community Development Services Section 2021 budget documents be received for information. Any questions or comments on the Planning and Development Section budget documents, operating goals or objectives or the 10-year capital? Seeing none, may I have a mover then for the motion? Deputy Mayor Dubo, a seconder? Counselor Rose, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Recreation and Community Services 2021 budget documents. The recommendation is that the Recreation and Community Services Section 2021 budget documents be received for information. Any questions on the goals and objectives, the operating budget or the capital forecast? Seeing none, may I have a mover then for the record? Counselor Rose, seconded by Counselor Mott? Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. And then Finance and Corporate Services 2021 budget documents. And the recommendation that the Finance and Corporate Services Section 2021 budget documents be received for information. And we have the goals and objectives for corporate services, goals and objectives for finance, goals and objectives for the fire department and for police services, the three-year operating budget and the 10-year capital. Any questions or comments on this particular budget? I have one, and this came up at our section meeting, and it was just with respect to the COVID grant. As council members may recall, we did get a grant of $245,400 for COVID-related expenses, and that grant was to cover any expenses related to 2020. But that amount could be carried forward for 2021 to cover any additional expenses related to COVID, and we know we've had expenses related to COVID, either lost revenues or expenses related, for example, to the staffing at the arena. The question to the treasurer was with respect to how are we allocating those funds? And are we gonna be able to bring any of those funds into the 2021 budget? So I know we talked about it earlier today, just if our treasurer or CAO could comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I can respond related to the COVID grant that we received. So basically, we are, obviously, our grant that we received is in a corporate GL account that is to be used to offset any potential year-end deficit related to COVID, related to COVID and the increased costs associated that we've incurred, certainly to offset the impact of reduced revenues. But having said that, we've already, prior to even hearing or getting the grant, we have implemented cost efficiencies to try to offset any net potential deficit. So obviously, the grant when we received it was good news. We don't allocate it for specific purposes. We're just going to use it at year-end to offset any potential deficit overall, whether regardless of what, you know, where that potential loss came from. So having said that, we were notified when we received the grant that any unused amount that is not required in 2020 can be carried forward to 2021 to offset 2021 COVID implications because we do, as I mentioned in our budget draft and the reduced revenues that we have projected, we are anticipating 2021 implications as well. So I guess in terms of the question is that when we do finalize our 2020 year-end, all of the invoices come in, we will know exactly how much of that grant that we are going to allocate to 2020, and then how much of the grant is remaining to allocate to 2021. When are we gonna know that? Probably not, probably not the specific number in terms of the carryforward or the allocation to 2021. Probably won't know that number before we approve our 2021 budget, but it will still happen even following, you know, approval of the budget. It will happen when we finalize our 2020 year-end, and, you know, all the invoices have come in and we've reconciled our requirements for 2020. I hope that answers what you were asking, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. It does. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Cummings?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just, we've mentioned this a few section meetings ago, but perhaps for council's benefit, the province has just announced again, applications for relief from municipal and education taxes to businesses that are suffering in stage two, stage three of COVID. Are we going to be held responsible for any of those refunds, or is it still provincially known? We talked about this a few sections ago.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Treasurer?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Cummings. So a few weeks ago, yes, there was an announcement from from the government that they were targeting municipal property tax relief, is what they were calling it, to businesses. That comment I did investigate, or that announcement I did investigate, to clarify that at the time that announcement was made, it was for the three hotspots, and it was the announcement by the premier was made, you know, in partnership or in in relation to the three mayors of those three communities. So they were putting their heads together to say, how can we offer this tax relief to the businesses? So that particular announcement was specifically related to the three hotspots that were closed down and put back into, I believe it was stage two. Anyways, it was Toronto Peel and Ottawa. Further to that, though, just recently, I believe today or yesterday, we just did get more correspondence related to a similar type of comment related to province-wide tax relief for businesses. Again, nothing in terms of detail other than the province is trying to have discussions with municipal groups as well as MPAC, as well as, I guess, all municipalities. And so there was some general information that came out. So there was some general information that came out as as recent as yesterday, I believe it was, to say that they are looking to reduce the education rates for the portion of business education taxes that some of the larger municipalities pay. But in terms of smaller municipalities like us, we I don't know the specific details of what they're discussing, but they're trying to come up with something so that all small businesses can be assisted in some way or another. The decision could be put in the the hands of each municipality and our council to to offer whatever that might look like versus a province-wide type of relief or reduction from business tax. And in terms of education, the province has offered to a few a few ways to allow us to offer some of that relief without it impacting us directly. So again, I'm not really sure how it's going to play out. It was just a a letter that came out, so nothing in detail. And I think it's really just some consultation that they're doing with everyone to try and come up with some relief measures. So I will certainly bring forward more information as I hear about it, and certainly how it's going to impact our overall budget process and and obviously our tax rate adoption process. But I will let you know as soon as as soon as I know.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I believe you're on mute.
I had a dog barking there. So again, so I'll read the motion that the Finance and Corporate Services Section 2021 Budget Documents be received for information. They have a mover, please for that. Counselor Cummings, seconder, Mayor LaRue. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. And the last budget item is the Library 2021 Budget Documents, that the Penitent Angling Public Library 2021 Budget Documents be received for information. And included is the goals and objectives, the three-year operating budget and 10-year capital plan. Any comments or questions on the library's proposed budget? Seeing none, may I have a mover for the motion that the Penitent Angling Public Library 2021 Budget Documents be received for information? Counselor Sanamal, seconder, Deputy Mayor Dubo, any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. And we have question period from the media and the public, and I think that there is one member of the media on still. I think it's Midland today. I wonder if that individual has any questions? Seeing none, your worship, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Counselor Budiman Kair. And before I adjourn the meeting, I just like to take this time and opportunity to to thank and congratulate Carrie and the senior staff on an excellent draft number three report. I'm sure they've worked hard to arrive at a 1.4%, and I just again congratulate all our senior staff and Carrie on the job well done. And I can only assume it'll only get, but nothing better. So with that, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.